Okay, let's start with Article One.
What? No change to the regions?
Article One asks you to hear the reports of the Select Board, Capital Improvements, Planning Committee, Town Treasurer, Town Clerk, School Committee, Tax Selector, Board of Health, Planning Board, or any other committees, and act thereon, which means you all have received the town report. And if those reports are included in such, Article Two. Do we need a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, residents, friends, neighbors, on behalf of the Select Board, I move that the town meeting vote to accept the town reports that are printed in the town annual report.
You have a second?
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
It's not, not a good visual because they don't have to raise their hands. That sucks.
Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes eighty-eight to two. One abstention. Article Two. To hear the report of the Finance Committee and vote to raise and appropriate such sums as money as may be deemed necessary to defray the town charges for the year ensuing, or take any other action relative thereto.
Chapter A, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate relying items one, one-four through nine-hundred of Article Two as presented in the warrant for a subtotal of three million seven hundred one hundred and four dollars.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Voting's open.
It's not, not a good visual because they don't have to raise their hands. That sucks.
Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes eighty-eight to two. One abstention. Article Two. To hear the report of the Finance Committee and vote to raise and appropriate such sums as money as may be deemed necessary to defray the town charges for the year ensuing, or take any other action relative thereto.
Chapter B, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate relying items one, one-four through nine-hundred of Article Two as presented in the warrant for a subtotal of three million seven hundred one hundred and four dollars.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Voting's open.
It's not, not a good visual because they don't have to raise their hands. That sucks.
Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes eighty-eight to two. One abstention. Article Two. To hear the report of the Finance Committee and vote to raise and appropriate such sums as money as may be deemed necessary to defray the town charges for the year ensuing, or take any other action relative thereto.
Chapter B, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate relying items one, one-four through nine-hundred of Article Two as presented in the warrant for a subtotal of three million seven hundred one hundred and four dollars.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Voting's open. The purpose, the purpose of town meetings is to conduct the yearly business of town from budget and finances to material needs. Examples could be highway, fire, EMS, or police equipment, to administrative needs, corrections or additions to town policies or bylaws, or just keeping the town compliant with the ever-changing world we live in. How town meeting works. You ever received a warrant, a town report, and a warrant like? The warrants were posted by a constable in a legal manner. Each warrant article is the town's suggestion on how we deal with each topic covered by a warrant, by a warrant article. Each article will be read in order of listing on the warrant. After each is read, the select warrant will enter a motion for consideration to the floor, after which a second to the motion will be asked for. If a further explanation of the motion is needed, the principal most able to explain will try to do just that. The floor will then open for discussion on the motion. Speakers must be residents of town or gain permission to speak. To speak, you must raise your hand to be recognized by the moderator before moving to or being handed a microphone before speaking. State your name and please speak your comments to within a two-minute period. During discussion, some behavior is unacceptable and may cause you to forfeit your right to speak. Vulgarity and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Raising your voice and talking over the two-minute mark may also cause the same end result. The moderator would like to limit each citizen to speaking once per article. During discussion of each article, please keep in mind, if someone has a different opinion than you, it doesn't mean they are wrong. It just means that their life experiences have led them to a different conclusion than you. It's all okay to be different. During discussion, we may decide to vote for an article as-is, or amend, meaning change it. We could decide to table it, put it aside for another time. Each article is open to many parliamentary motions, and these are outlined in the handbook Town Meeting Time, published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association in nineteen sixty-two and adopted by Town Meeting Vote in this town in two thousand twenty-three. So that's the rules we run our meeting by. As far as electronic voting goes, you all have a clicker. The yes button is green, the no button is red, and the abstention button is yellow. Those are the only buttons we need worry about. At the end of the meeting, please turn these in. Also, you, you, most of you have gotten a Conway Cultural Council survey. If you could find the time to fill it out, there's a cardboard box on your right as you leave, and they would like those completed, put in there. If you can help us out there, that'd be wonderful. I think we're about ready.
Close the papers.
We, we tested them a bunch of times earlier, so I think we're okay. Would you like everybody to press their buttons and?
No, I would just want everyone to remember that you go to sleep, so sometimes you might have to push a button to wake you up before you push the button.
Now, with, with these, you can press a button as many times as you want each vote. It's only going to record the last, what you pressed the last time you pressed the button. So it's not like if you press thirty-seven times and you're going to have thirty-seven yeses. It's only going to record that last one. Never know. Okay, let's start with Article One.
What? No change to the regions?
Article One asks you to hear the reports of the Select Board, Capital Improvements, Planning Committee, Town Treasurer, Town Clerk, School Committee, Tax Selector, Board of Health, Planning Board, or any other committees, and act thereon, which means you all have received the town report. And if those reports are included in such, Article Two. Do we need a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, residents, friends, neighbors, on behalf of the Select Board, I move that the town meeting vote to accept the town reports that are printed in the town annual report.
You have a second?
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Voting's open.
It's not, not a good visual because they don't have to raise their hands. That sucks.
Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes eighty-eight to two. One abstention. Article Two. To hear the report of the Finance Committee and vote to raise and appropriate such sums as money as may be deemed necessary to defray the town charges for the year ensuing, or take any other action relative thereto.
Chapter A, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate relying items one, one-four through nine-hundred of Article Two as presented in the warrant for a subtotal of three million seven hundred one hundred and four dollars.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Voting's open. The purpose, the purpose of town meetings is to conduct the yearly business of town from budget and finances to material needs. Examples could be highway, fire, EMS, or police equipment, to administrative needs, corrections or additions to town policies or bylaws, or just keeping the town compliant with the ever-changing world we live in. How town meeting works. You ever received a warrant, a town report, and a warrant like? The warrants were posted by a constable in a legal manner. Each warrant article is the town's suggestion on how we deal with each topic covered by a warrant, by a warrant article. Each article will be read in order of listing on the warrant. After each is read, the select warrant will enter a motion for consideration to the floor, after which a second to the motion will be asked for. If a further explanation of the motion is needed, the principal most able to explain will try to do just that. The floor will then open for discussion on the motion. Speakers must be residents of town or gain permission to speak. To speak, you must raise your hand to be recognized by the moderator before moving to or being handed a microphone before speaking. State your name and please speak your comments to within a two-minute period. During discussion, some behavior is unacceptable and may cause you to forfeit your right to speak. Vulgarity and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Raising your voice and talking over the two-minute mark may also cause the same end result. The moderator would like to limit each citizen to speaking once per article. During discussion of each article, please keep in mind, if someone has a different opinion than you, it doesn't mean they are wrong. It just means that their life experiences have led them to a different conclusion than you. It's all okay to be different. During discussion, we may decide to vote for an article as-is, or amend, meaning change it. We could decide to table it, put it aside for another time. Each article is open to many parliamentary motions, and these are outlined in the handbook Town Meeting Time, published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association in nineteen sixty-two and adopted by Town Meeting Vote in this town in two thousand twenty-three. So that's the rules we run our meeting by. As far as electronic voting goes, you all have a clicker. The yes button is green, the no button is red, and the abstention button is yellow. Those are the only buttons we need worry about. At the end of the meeting, please turn these in. Also, you, you, most of you have gotten a Conway Cultural Council survey. If you could find the time to fill it out, there's a cardboard box on your right as you leave, and they would like those completed, put in there. If you can help us out there, that'd be wonderful. I think we're about ready.
Close the papers.
We, we tested them a bunch of times earlier, so I think we're okay. Would you like everybody to press their buttons and?
No, I would just want everyone to remember that you go to sleep, so sometimes you might have to push a button to wake you up before you push the button.
Now, with, with these, you can press a button as many times as you want each vote. It's only going to record the last, what you pressed the last time you pressed the button. So it's not like if you press thirty-seven times and you're going to have thirty-seven yeses. It's only going to record that last one. Never know. Okay, let's start with Article One.
What? No change to the regions?
Article One asks you to hear the reports of the Select Board, Capital Improvements, Planning Committee, Town Treasurer, Town Clerk, School Committee, Tax Selector, Board of Health, Planning Board, or any other committees, and act thereon, which means you all have received the town report. And if those reports are included in such, Article Two. Do we need a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, residents, friends, neighbors, on behalf of the Select Board, I move that the town meeting vote to accept the town reports that are printed in the town annual report.
You have a second?
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Voting's open.
It's not, not a good visual because they don't have to raise their hands. That sucks.
Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes eighty-eight to two. One abstention. Article Two. To hear the report of the Finance Committee and vote to raise and appropriate such sums as money as may be deemed necessary to defray the town charges for the year ensuing, or take any other action relative thereto.
Chapter A, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate relying items one, one-four through nine-hundred of Article Two as presented in the warrant for a subtotal of three million seven hundred one hundred and four dollars.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Voting's open. The purpose, the purpose of town meetings is to conduct the yearly business of town from budget and finances to material needs. Examples could be highway, fire, EMS, or police equipment, to administrative needs, corrections or additions to town policies or bylaws, or just keeping the town compliant with the ever-changing world we live in. How town meeting works. You ever received a warrant, a town report, and a warrant like? The warrants were posted by a constable in a legal manner. Each warrant article is the town's suggestion on how we deal with each topic covered by a warrant, by a warrant article. Each article will be read in order of listing on the warrant. After each is read, the select warrant will enter a motion for consideration to the floor, after which a second to the motion will be asked for. If a further explanation of the motion is needed, the principal most able to explain will try to do just that. The floor will then open for discussion on the motion. Speakers must be residents of town or gain permission to speak. To speak, you must raise your hand to be recognized by the moderator before moving to or being handed a microphone before speaking. State your name and please speak your comments to within a two-minute period. During discussion of each article, please keep in mind, if someone has a different opinion than you, it doesn't mean they are wrong. It just means that their life experiences have led them to a different conclusion than you. It's all okay to be different. During discussion, we may decide to vote for an article as-is, or amend, meaning change it. We could decide to table it, put it aside for another time. Each article is open to many parliamentary motions, and these are outlined in the handbook Town Meeting Time, published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association in nineteen sixty-two and adopted by Town Meeting Vote in this town in two thousand twenty-three. So that's the rules we run our meeting by. As far as electronic voting goes, you all have a clicker. The yes button is green, the no button is red, and the abstention button is yellow. Those are the only buttons we need worry about. At the end of the meeting, please turn these in. Also, you, you, most of you have gotten a Conway Cultural Council survey. If you could find the time to fill it out, there's a cardboard box on your right as you leave, and they would like those completed, put in there. If you can help us out there, that'd be wonderful. I think we're about ready.
Close the papers.
We, we tested them a bunch of times earlier, so I think we're okay. Would you like everybody to press their buttons and?
No, I would just want everyone to remember that you go to sleep, so sometimes you might have to push a button to wake you up before you push the button.
Now, with, with these, you can press a button as many times as you want each vote. It's only going to record the last, what you pressed the last time you pressed the button. So it's not like if you press thirty-seven times and you're going to have thirty-seven yeses. It's only going to record that last one. Never know. Okay, let's start with Article One.
What? No change to the regions?
Article One asks you to hear the reports of the Select Board, Capital Improvements, Planning Committee, Town Treasurer, Town Clerk, School Committee, Tax Selector, Board of Health, Planning Board, or any other committees, and act thereon, which means you all have received the town report. And if those reports are included in such, Article Two. Do we need a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, residents, friends, neighbors, on behalf of the Select Board, I move that the town meeting vote to accept the town reports that are printed in the town annual report.
You have a second?
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Voting's open.
It's not, not a good visual because they don't have to raise their hands. That sucks.
Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes eighty-eight to two. One abstention. Article Two. To hear the report of the Finance Committee and vote to raise and appropriate such sums as money as may be deemed necessary to defray the town charges for the year ensuing, or take any other action relative thereto.
Chapter A, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate relying items one, one-four through nine-hundred of Article Two as presented in the warrant for a subtotal of three million seven hundred one hundred and four dollars.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Voting's open. The purpose, the purpose of town meetings is to conduct the yearly business of town from budget and finances to material needs. Examples could be highway, fire, EMS, or police equipment, to administrative needs, corrections or additions to town policies or bylaws, or just keeping the town compliant with the ever-changing world we live in. How town meeting works. You ever received a warrant, a town report, and a warrant like? The warrants were posted by a constable in a legal manner. Each warrant article is the town's suggestion on how we deal with each topic covered by a warrant, by a warrant article. Each article will be read in order of listing on the warrant. After each is read, the select warrant will enter a motion for consideration to the floor, after which a second to the motion will be asked for. If a further explanation of the motion is needed, the principal most able to explain will try to do just that. The floor will then open for discussion on the motion. Speakers must be residents of town or gain permission to speak. To speak, you must raise your hand to be recognized by the moderator before moving to or being handed a microphone before speaking. State your name and please speak your comments to within a two-minute period. During discussion of each article, please keep in mind, if someone has a different opinion than you, it doesn't mean they are wrong. It just means that their life experiences have led them to a different conclusion than you. It's all okay to be different. During discussion, we may decide to vote for an article as-is, or amend, meaning change it. We could decide to table it, put it aside for another time. Each article is open to many parliamentary motions, and these are outlined in the handbook Town Meeting Time, published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association in nineteen sixty-two and adopted by Town Meeting Vote in this town in two thousand twenty-three. So that's the rules we run our meeting by. As far as electronic voting goes, you all have a clicker. The yes button is green, the no button is red, and the abstention button is yellow. Those are the only buttons we need worry about. At the end of the meeting, please turn these in. Also, you, you, most of you have gotten a Conway Cultural Council survey. If you could find the time to fill it out, there's a cardboard box on your right as you leave, and they would like those completed, put in there. If you can help us out there, that'd be wonderful. I think we're about ready.
Close the papers.
We, we tested them a bunch of times earlier, so I think we're okay. Would you like everybody to press their buttons and?
No, I would just want everyone to remember that you go to sleep, so sometimes you might have to push a button to wake you up before you push the button.
Now, with, with these, you can press a button as many times as you want each vote. It's only going to record the last, what you pressed the last time you pressed the button. So it's not like if you press thirty-seven times and you're going to have thirty-seven yeses. It's only going to record that last one. Never know. Okay, let's start with Article One.
What? No change to the regions?
Article One asks you to hear the reports of the Select Board, Capital Improvements, Planning Committee, Town Treasurer, Town Clerk, School Committee, Tax Selector, Board of Health, Planning Board, or any other committees, and act thereon, which means you all have received the town report. And if those reports are included in such, Article Two. Do we need a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, residents, friends, neighbors, on behalf of the Select Board, I move that the town meeting vote to accept the town reports that are printed in the town annual report.
You have a second?
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Voting's open. It's not, not a good visual because they don't have to raise their hands. That sucks.
Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes eighty-eight to two. One abstention. Article Two. To hear the report of the Finance Committee and vote to raise and appropriate such sums as money as may be deemed necessary to defray the town charges for the year ensuing, or take any other action relative thereto.
Chapter B, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate relying items one, one-four through nine-hundred of Article Two as presented in the warrant for a subtotal of three million seven hundred one hundred and four dollars.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Voting's open. The purpose, the purpose of town meetings is to conduct the yearly business of town from budget and finances to material needs. Examples could be highway, fire, EMS, or police equipment, to administrative needs, corrections or additions to town policies or bylaws, or just keeping the town compliant with the ever-changing world we live in. How town meeting works. You ever received a warrant, a town report, and a warrant like? The warrants were posted by a constable in a legal manner. Each warrant article is the town's suggestion on how we deal with each topic covered by a warrant, by a warrant article. Each article will be read in order of listing on the warrant. After each is read, the select warrant will enter a motion for consideration to the floor, after which a second to the motion will be asked for. If a further explanation of the motion is needed, the principal most able to explain will try to do just that. The floor will then open for discussion on the motion. Speakers must be residents of town or gain permission to speak. To speak, you must raise your hand to be recognized by the moderator before moving to or being handed a microphone before speaking. State your name and please speak your comments to within a two-minute period. During discussion of each article, please keep in mind, if someone has a different opinion than you, it doesn't mean they are wrong. It just means that their life experiences have led them to a different conclusion than you. It's all okay to be different. During discussion, we may decide to vote for an article as-is, or amend, meaning change it. We could decide to table it, put it aside for another time. Each article is open to many parliamentary motions, and these are outlined in the handbook Town Meeting Time, published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association in nineteen sixty-two and adopted by Town Meeting Vote in this town in two thousand twenty-three. So that's the rules we run our meeting by. As far as electronic voting goes, you all have a clicker. The yes button is green, the no button is red, and the abstention button is yellow. Those are the only buttons we need worry about. At the end of the meeting, please turn these in. Also, you, you, most of you have gotten a Conway Cultural Council survey. If you could find the time to fill it out, there's a cardboard box on your right as you leave, and they would like those completed, put in there. If you can help us out there, that'd be wonderful. I think we're about ready.
Close the papers.
We, we tested them a bunch of times earlier, so I think we're okay. Would you like everybody to press their buttons and?
No, I would just want everyone to remember that you go to sleep, so sometimes you might have to push a button to wake you up before you push the button.
Now, with, with these, you can press a button as many times as you want each vote. It's only going to record the last, what you pressed the last time you pressed the button. So it's not like if you press thirty-seven times and you're going to have thirty-seven yeses. It's only going to record that last one. Never know. Okay, let's start with Article One.
What? No change to the regions?
Article One asks you to hear the reports of the Select Board, Capital Improvements, Planning Committee, Town Treasurer, Town Clerk, School Committee, Tax Selector, Board of Health, Planning Board, or any other committees, and act thereon, which means you all have received the town report. And if those reports are included in such, Article Two. Do we need a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, residents, friends, neighbors, on behalf of the Select Board, I move that the town meeting vote to accept the town reports that are printed in the town annual report.
You have a second?
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Voting's open. The purpose, the purpose of town meetings is to conduct the yearly business of town from budget and finances to material needs. Examples could be highway, fire, EMS, or police equipment, to administrative needs, corrections or additions to town policies or bylaws, or just keeping the town compliant with the ever-changing world we live in. How town meeting works. You ever received a warrant, a town report, and a warrant like? The warrants were posted by a constable in a legal manner. Each warrant article is the town's suggestion on how we deal with each topic covered by a warrant, by a warrant article. Each article will be read in order of listing on the warrant. After each is read, the select warrant will enter a motion for consideration to the floor, after which a second to the motion will be asked for. If a further explanation of the motion is needed, the principal most able to explain will try to do just that. The floor will then open for discussion on the motion. Speakers must be residents of town or gain permission to speak. To speak, you must raise your hand to be recognized by the moderator before moving to or being handed a microphone before speaking. State your name and please speak your comments to within a two-minute period. During discussion of each article, please keep in mind, if someone has a different opinion than you, it doesn't mean they are wrong. It just means that their life experiences have led them to a different conclusion than you. It's all okay to be different. During discussion, we may decide to vote for an article as-is, or amend, meaning change it. We could decide to table it, put it aside for another time. Each article is open to many parliamentary motions, and these are outlined in the handbook Town Meeting Time, published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association in nineteen sixty-two and adopted by Town Meeting Vote in this town in two thousand twenty-three. So that's the rules we run our meeting by. As far as electronic voting goes, you all have a clicker. The yes button is green, the no button is red, and the abstention button is yellow. Those are the only buttons we need worry about. At the end of the meeting, please turn these in. Also, you, you, most of you have gotten a Conway Cultural Council survey. If you could find the time to fill it out, there's a cardboard box on your right as you leave, and they would like those completed, put in there. If you can help us out there, that'd be wonderful. I think we're about ready.
Close the papers.
We, we tested them a bunch of times earlier, so I think we're okay. Would you like everybody to press their buttons and?
No, I would just want everyone to remember that you go to sleep, so sometimes you might have to push a button to wake you up before you push the button.
Now, with, with these, you can press a button as many times as you want each vote. It's only going to record the last, what you pressed the last time you pressed the button. So it's not like if you press thirty-seven times and you're going to have thirty-seven yeses. It's only going to record that last one. Never know. Okay, let's start with Article One.
What? No change to the regions?
Article One asks you to hear the reports of the Select Board, Capital Improvements, Planning Committee, Town Treasurer, Town Clerk, School Committee, Tax Selector, Board of Health, Planning Board, or any other committees, and act thereon, which means you all have received the town report. And if those reports are included in such, Article Two. Do we need a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, residents, friends, neighbors, on behalf of the Select Board, I move that the town meeting vote to accept the town reports that are printed in the town annual report.
You have a second?
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Voting's open. The purpose, the purpose of town meetings is to conduct the yearly business of town from budget and finances to material needs. Examples could be highway, fire, EMS, or police equipment, to administrative needs, corrections or additions to town policies or bylaws, or just keeping the town compliant with the ever-changing world we live in. How town meeting works. You ever received a warrant, a town report, and a warrant like? The warrants were posted by a constable in a legal manner. Each warrant article is the town's suggestion on how we deal with each topic covered by a warrant, by a warrant article. Each article will be read in order of listing on the warrant. After each is read, the select warrant will enter a motion for consideration to the floor, after which a second to the motion will be asked for. If a further explanation of the motion is needed, the principal most able to explain will try to do just that. The floor will then open for discussion on the motion. Speakers must be residents of town or gain permission to speak. To speak, you must raise your hand to be recognized by the moderator before moving to or being handed a microphone before speaking. State your name and please speak your comments to within a two-minute period. During discussion of each article, please keep in mind, if someone has a different opinion than you, it doesn't mean they are wrong. It just means that their life experiences have led them to a different conclusion than you. It's all okay to be different. During discussion, we may decide to vote for an article as-is, or amend, meaning change it. We could decide to table it, put it aside for another time. Each article is open to many parliamentary motions, and these are outlined in the handbook Town Meeting Time, published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association in nineteen sixty-two and adopted by Town Meeting Vote in this town in two thousand twenty-three. So that's the rules we run our meeting by. As far as electronic voting goes, you all have a clicker. The yes button is green, the no button is red, and the abstention button is yellow. Those are the only buttons we need worry about. At the end of the meeting, please turn these in. Also, you, you, most of you have gotten a Conway Cultural Council survey. If you could find the time to fill it out, there's a cardboard box on your right as you leave, and they would like those completed, put in there. If you can help us out there, that'd be wonderful. I think we're about ready.
Close the papers.
We, we tested them a bunch of times earlier, so I think we're okay. Would you like everybody to press their buttons and?
No, I would just want everyone to remember that you go to sleep, so sometimes you might have to push a button to wake you up before you push the button.
Now, with, with these, you can press a button as many times as you want each vote. It's only going to record the last, what you pressed the last time you pressed the button. So it's not like if you press thirty-seven times and you're going to have thirty-seven yeses. It's only going to record that last one. Never know. Okay, let's start with Article One.
What? No change to the regions?
Article One asks you to hear the reports of the Select Board, Capital Improvements, Planning Committee, Town Treasurer, Town Clerk, School Committee, Tax Selector, Board of Health, Planning Board, or any other committees, and act thereon, which means you all have received the town report. And if those reports are included in such, Article Two. Do we need a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, residents, friends, neighbors, on behalf of the Select Board, I move that the town meeting vote to accept the town reports that are printed in the town annual report.
You have a second?
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Voting's open. The purpose, the purpose of town meetings is to conduct the yearly business of town from budget and finances to material needs. Examples could be highway, fire, EMS, or police equipment, to administrative needs, corrections or additions to town policies or bylaws, or just keeping the town compliant with the ever-changing world we live in. How town meeting works. You ever received a warrant, a town report, and a warrant like? The warrants were posted by a constable in a legal manner. Each warrant article is the town's suggestion on how we deal with each topic covered by a warrant, by a warrant article. Each article will be read in order of listing on the warrant. After each is read, the select warrant will enter a motion for consideration to the floor, after which a second to the motion will be asked for. If a further explanation of the motion is needed, the principal most able to explain will try to do just that. The floor will then open for discussion on the motion. Speakers must be residents of town or gain permission to speak. To speak, you must raise your hand to be recognized by the moderator before moving to or being handed a microphone before speaking. State your name and please speak your comments to within a two-minute period. During discussion of each article, please keep in mind, if someone has a different opinion than you, it doesn't mean they are wrong. It just means that their life experiences have led them to a different conclusion than you. It's all okay to be different. During discussion, we may decide to vote for an article as-is, or amend, meaning change it. We could decide to table it, put it aside for another time. Each article is open to many parliamentary motions, and these are outlined in the handbook Town Meeting Time, published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association in nineteen sixty-two and adopted by Town Meeting Vote in this town in two thousand twenty-three. So that's the rules we run our meeting by. As far as electronic voting goes, you all have a clicker. The yes button is green, the no button is red, and the abstention button is yellow. Those are the only buttons we need worry about. At the end of the meeting, please turn these in. Also, you, you, most of you have gotten a Conway Cultural Council survey. If you could find the time to fill it out, there's a cardboard box on your right as you leave, and they would like those completed, put in there. If you can help us out there, that'd be wonderful. I think we're about ready.
Close the papers.
We, we tested them a bunch of times earlier, so I think we're okay. Would you like everybody to press their buttons and?
No, I would just want everyone to remember that you go to sleep, so sometimes you might have to push a button to wake you up before you push the button.
Now, with, with these, you can press a button as many times as you want each vote. It's only going to record the last, what you pressed the last time you pressed the button. So it's not like if you press thirty-seven times and you're going to have thirty-seven yeses. It's only going to record that last one. Never know. Okay, let's start with Article One.
What? No change to the regions?
Article One asks you to hear the reports of the Select Board, Capital Improvements, Planning Committee, Town Treasurer, Town Clerk, School Committee, Tax Selector, Board of Health, Planning Board, or any other committees, and act thereon, which means you all have received the town report. And if those reports are included in such, Article Two. Do we need a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, residents, friends, neighbors, on behalf of the Select Board, I move that the town meeting vote to accept the town reports that are printed in the town annual report.
You have a second?
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Hi, Julie Washington, New Hall. We had just moved in in November from here, and forgive my ignorance, but what is frontier? Oh, the high school.
Any other? Okay, seeing none, let's go. Voting's open.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate relying items three-hundred A and three-hundred B of Article Two as presented in the warrant for a subtotal of two million two hundred and nine thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Cecilia Van Drish, Waitley Road. I wonder if somebody could explain the continuing increase in the Darius' transportation budget?
Darius Modesto, Superintendent. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Our transportation contract runs in a five-year bid cycle. We usually do bid this year with transportation and that bid had a significant increase. And so that is what we do. For me, within the contract moving forward, there is a annual increase to go with cost of the increase inside, within the contract. So you're going to see a nominal increase after this big jump of this year. And overall, with the transportation contract, their bid is still lower than the other transportation contracts in Franklin County, but they did make that market adjustment to be closer to the other contracts in Franklin County. So it's still getting a quality contract of value, but it was a significant increase this year.
Any other discussion? Three-hundred A or three-hundred B? Here we see none, let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes one-hundred and ten to five, with two abstentions.
Article Two, Chapter Three. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate for line items three-ten A, three-ten B, and three-ten C of Article Two as presented in the warrant for a subtotal of one million six hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and seven four dollars.
Do you have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Wait.
Hi, Julie Luster, New Haven. We had just moved in in November from here and forgive my ignorance, but what is frontier?
Oh, the high school.
Yes.
Any other? Okay, seeing none, let's vote. Voting's open. Five more seconds. Voting's closed. Motion passes one-hundred and nine, yes, three no, two abstentions.
Article Two, Chapter D. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate for line items three-twenty A, three-twenty B, and three-twenty C of Article Two as presented in the warrant for a subtotal of one hundred thirty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Do you have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes one-hundred and fourteen, yes, three no, one abstention. Thank you very much for coming all this way, Superintendent Martin.
Article Two, Chapter E. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate for line items three-thirty A and three-thirty B of Article Two as presented in the warrant for a subtotal of zero dollars, for a school's appropriation subtotal of four million thirty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and a total in Article Two of seven million fifty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Second? Motion and a second? Any discussion?
Hello, my name is Kylie, thirty-one of Telford Falls, right. I just have a quick question. Sorry, this is my first meeting. Why are the budgets for the schools going down? As opposed, I'm just, for the tech schools?
The tech school budget for this year was very closely correlated to the enrollment in the town and the town student population in that school went down. So the budget's went down.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes one-hundred and sixteen to three with no abstentions.
Article Three. I move that the town vote to set the salaries of elected officials as provided by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-One, Section One-O-A, to be made effective from July first, 2025, as presented in the budget.
Do you have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mary McFlintock, the microphone's coming your way.
Addy, I'm Mary McFlintock. I live right down the hill. So we have some, we have some elected officials that are paid and some elected officials that are not paid. If anybody have an explanation, I mean, I see the Select Board sets the, you know, gets the sets are paid, but then which ones are, which ones are paid, which ones aren't? Can you help pull them out?
No. I mean, for a serious custom practice, haven't you?
Sorry, are you looking, that's all, sorry. Are you looking for a listing right now of all the different ones, positions that are stipended or not? Or, because like, the board of health does get a stipend, the planning board does not. They're both elected. So I don't, I don't have the list right in front of me, but I'm happy to get it to you later if you want to see who's stipend.
Yeah, I mean, I don't need to have a whole list right now because security, I mean, I wasn't a elected official, I didn't get a stipend, that's fine, I didn't attract one. But I don't have decisions to get paid, to get stipended or not, and that's getting outside the scope of this article.
I can tell you that I believe this will be, and members of Personnel Committee can confirm, but I think that's something that we're going to be discussing as coming here.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting's closed. Article Pass, one-hundred and nine, yes, three no, five abstentions.
Article Four. I move that the town vote to transfer sixteen thousand dollars from the Conway Grammar School Stabilization Fund for a new phone system for the Conway Grammar School.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Okay, let's vote.
No, she, no discussion.
Oh, sorry.
Could somebody just, and maybe to be concise, somebody could just explain the phone and the video and the, what's that, one more, for the grammar school? The mini splits? Can we just get a brief overview of all of this?
Again, here, Superintendent Superintendent. Our phone system is, at the date, the software system, the whole component is no longer updatable, so we can't do any updates to change lines, control those kind of things. We also can't buy handsets unless we go on eBay to get the ones that are associated with the software.
What to do what?
And it also, we don't have the ability to do
To do what, yeah, what do you want?
The new nine-one-one protocols, which allow for, give us reverse dialing. So if you call from the classroom and someone hangs up, nine-one-one should be able to call back.
Okay, so it's plugged into channel one.
So a couple
The top thing says A.
But the real
The thing says internal mic, mic, or input one. Should it be input one or on?
You can call someone in. So that's, that's the phone.
Then the bottom one is set online.
The next one is the video surveillance system. We, I'm not going to go too far because that's the security, but we do not have a video surveillance system here. It just will allow us to have cameras on the outside of the building and up on the inside of the building.
What?
To wait for them to set up a little monitor any traffic coming or going from the building. I look at it as a security to your
He needs me out.
As well as allows law enforcement to be able to follow up on any issues that we can have. All the other, all the other schools near our larger district have security systems. It's a little bit more costly because we're buying a whole solar system that's going to run off of. We'll be able to add more and more cameras to it.
Oh, shit.
And then the last one is the mini splits. So the last few years, we've been improving in the upgrading of our air conditioning and community control within this building. We have two classrooms left, so that, I guess we'll take care of those last two classrooms. And there will be a rebate on that.
That's in input one.
We're going through EverSource and we're getting money back.
Yeah, I got it turned up to like
So we only be paying about ten thousand dollars.
I got it up to ten.
Forty percent back for the rebate. And then it's going to go to the next question about the money that we already saved, they're going to ask me to transfer it back because the money that we're saving for EverSource is being given back to the town and then the town asks us to put it back into our stabilization account.
He says he thinks my camera's turning it down.
Any question on all that?
He's all the way up.
It's really easy to leave it and thinking about it for years.
Yeah, it should be on A or M? Is that doing it?
Turned on, okay. Cecilia Van Drish, Waitley Road. Could, I think I just missed it. Did you say that all the other schools have the video surveillance system in the district?
Correct.
Is that better? He, he, he says, he says it's all the way up.
Randall Williams, Sheldon Falls, wrote. Their system is designed, you have to dial one-nine before you get out. And the police department goes numerous times for nine-one-one calls out of nothing. So a new system is needed.
Any other? Okay, let's vote. Yes, just on Article Four. Five more seconds. Voting's closed. Article Four passes, one-hundred and twenty-one, yes, three no, no abstentions.
Article Five. I move that the town vote to transfer twenty thousand dollars from the Conway Grammar School Stabilization Fund for a video surveillance system for the Conway Grammar School.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Wait, wait for a microphone, please.
Lori Block, Baptist Hill Road. The very last part of that sentence, which wasn't read aloud, includes or take any action relative thereof. Does that include if you expand to a pickleball court this close to the school, video surveillance of the pickleball court?
Hi, okay, great. This is, does not include any surveillance for the pickleball court. If the town wishes to put money toward surveillance for that, we could run a line out to that end or buy a camera that does that. This will be able to track any cars coming through, so we'll have, they'll provide some support toward surveillance of that, but it's not, I'm not going to tell you where the cameras are facing, but there's nothing going to be on the pickleball court.
Just, by way of response also to Lori Block's question, there's a difference between the motions that are being read and the warrant article that you're, that you were referring to. The warrant article, the warrant itself is the notice to the town of the subject matters being voted on and discussed. The motions that I'm reading are what we are actually voting on.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. Article Five. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes, one-hundred and fifteen, yes, eight no, one abstention.
Article Six. I move that the town vote to transfer seventeen thousand seven hundred dollars from the Conway Grammar School Stabilization Fund to provide mini splits for the Conway Grammar School.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Okay, let's vote. Article Six. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes, one-hundred and three, yes, three no, one abstention.
Article Seven. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash fifty-three thousand seven hundred dollars to the Conway Grammar School Capital Stabilization Fund.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Okay, let's vote. Article Seven. Okay. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes, ninety-eight, yes, three no. Okay.
Article Eight.
Oop. I'm going to throw you a curve ball. We are going to take Article Twenty-seven. This is on the prerogative of the moderator. We're going to take Article Twenty-seven. So you need to find that in your warrants. And we are going to move this to be the next article. The reason being is with the pickleball courts being proposed to be out back here, this involves the school and that involves Darius Modesto. And since he's been good enough to come and be with us today to talk about school stuff, if he waits till Article Twenty-seven, we're taking a much larger chunk out of his day than has to. So I hope you'll indulge me in this so we can do this. And this will be the last article involving the school and he can go enjoy the outdoors that we're going to get too shortly. Pardon? Oh, yes. Okay, Article Twenty-seven.
I move that the town vote to appropriate or reserve for later appropriation monies from the Community Preservation Fund, with each item considered a separate appropriation. A, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Fund, specifically from the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve Account, to the Town of Conway Parks and Recreation Committee for the construction of four pickleball courts behind the Conway Grammar School for community use.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion or explanation?
I am Jan Warner. I am the Conway Treasurer and Tax Collector. I live on Waitley Road and most recently I've become involved with the Conway Park and Recreation Committee. And you may have heard by now that pickleball has become quite active in our community. It's quite active, it's sweeping the country. And we in Conway have come to find out that it's quite a bit of fun. And before I get into a big description of the project, I want to tell you that we're asking for CPA funds to support this project. Many of you know what that is, there may be some of you that don't, so I want to just kind of briefly touch how that works. So back in two thousand and five, we voted to accept the Community Preservation Act and that means that we are assessed a surcharge on our tax bill and it's based on your tax amount. And that money goes to a holding account that legally can only be spent for specific purposes. There's four of them. The one that we're asking for is for outdoor recreation. The other categories are for open space, historic preservation, and affordable housing. So we collect, we collected last year a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in your tax money for this purpose. And we also get a state match each year. Last year we got just over a hundred thousand. So roughly two hundred thousand is being added to this account every year. And it's built up and we currently have a balance of over one point seven million. So we feel we're asking for a small part of this and I just wanted you to understand that before you say no because you don't want to spend money. This is, we're not asking for This is, we're not asking for any new tax money, it's already money that we've saved and put aside for just a purpose like this. So, pickleball started here in Conway about two years ago. We started with ten people. We've quickly grown now and have over 119 regular players that sign up and play in our organized play sessions. We have many more players who come on their own with their families, their kids, and hit the ball around. We started using the basketball courts down on the ball field, and we have two basketball courts. And we quickly outgrew these courts and moved into the tennis courts. So right now, we use both basketball courts and tennis courts. We tape out our lines on the tennis courts, and each day when we finish playing, we have to take up that tape, because the tennis players would like to have their space uninterrupted. So we've developed some schedules to try and share the space, but pickleball, as you know, there's so many people, it can be intimidating if you come down to bounce around the basketball and there's thirty people there playing pickleball, you may not wanna say, "Hey, could you leave so we can play basketball?" So, we decided that we need our own space, so we started looking around, and one of the sites, the second site actually that we identified, is the one here behind the grammar school. It's currently been designated for the highway garage that to, for them to use for their purposes, and Ron Sweet was kind enough to allow us to propose a plan on that site. So our plan is for four courts. It's a 130 by 60-foot square asphalt pad with fencing, netting, et cetera. And it's gonna cost about $150,000, I mentioned, so this is a really great price for a project like this, and the reason we're able to present such a great price is that Ron Sweet, our highway manager, has agreed that he will work overtime to do this project. So, he's going to use the town bidding process, that he's already bid all the materials for the year, including the asphalt, the gravel, et cetera, using the town's equipment, and then he'd be paid overtime to do it. So we save money because we don't have to go out to bid, we don't have to hire an engineer, so there, there's significant savings that way. So, but, so that I don't talk too long, I hope I have a little more than two minutes, but I just wanted to tell you briefly, without going on too long, what pickleball means to me and our community. Pickleball, and I'm gonna read these sentences so I don't miss anything, but, "Pickleball unites the old and the young, families and friends, newcomers and originals, it is attractive to the athletically inclined while being inviting to the inexperienced. It promotes a welcoming and supporting kind atmosphere for gentle competition and self-improvement. And in today's world of separation, this sport truly brings people of all domains together." And I know that there are many pickleball players here that can share that sentiment. So, I wanna talk a little bit about the location. So, one of the big concerns about that location is that it's so close to our grammar school. So the way it would go is you'd come in the grammar school driveway, right by the front door, around the back, and there's a little parking lot back there that has an exit to the field, so we would exit out there. The courts would have twenty of their own parking spaces. So, with school safety in mind, people may be concerned that there's additional traffic coming and going from the school, and the, the way, I, we have met with Principal Gordon and Mr. Modesto and talked about school safety issues, and we addressed them in these ways. We're proposing two speed bumps to go in, one, and they'll be removable speed bumps so that they can come out during the winter for plowing. So the first one will go in somewhere after the highway garage driveway before the playground, and the second one is to go, if you go past the school entrance, right on that corner that goes to the back of the school. So, the school already has, you know, some traffic safety concerns, and this allows us to sort of get together and address them together and come under the pickleball project. So in the safety concerns, we also added radar, solar-controlled radar sign, much like you've seen around town already. I spoke with Chief Bates, and we can work together to come up with that sign to, to slow people down coming in and out of the driveway. Now, most of our playtime happens in the late afternoon, evening, or Saturdays and Sundays. We have very little playtime and, and almost no playtime organized during the day. So, the, the majority of the traffic would be after-school hours, although we don't wanna prevent people from coming during the day. If it should become a problem, we could always put up signage and stop it. Now, our pickleball community is very close-knit. We have a Facebook group, we have, are in contact by emails, we're reaching out through the Conway Currents. So, it's, it's pretty easy to keep people updated in what, what the concerns are and make sure that we are respectful of, of the needs of the school. So let's see, the safety bombs. So noise, noise control always comes up with pickleball. And one of the really nice things about this location is that it's a noisier spot right next to it. So, the highway garage makes plenty of noise with their tractors and equipment coming and going, and I don't think, we, we have the closest neighbors right here, maybe she'll wanna say something, but she doesn't seem to have a problem with the noise. So we think it's a, it's a great location. We also did some testing from the school, so I met with the principal and a couple of staff members, and we went and whacked the ball around out in the field a little bit to see if they could hear much, and they literally could hear nothing. So, it's not gonna be any sound problem with the school. And in addition, just as a little side benefit, being right here close to the school, the gym teacher has expressed some interest that he may wanna teach the kids how to play pickleball, so it's an additional, something that the schoolchildren may use. So, just so I stay, I wanna be forthright with this, if we came, during the, the planning of this program, we came upon a little glitch, and that is that there is currently a personnel issue between Ron and the select board, and he is not willing to do any additional jobs not in his daily, you know, job description and, and what's expected of him. So at this moment, he doesn't wanna do it, but we're hoping that this issue can be resolved quickly. We really feel positive that it can be resolved, and what I'm asking from you is to have some faith that it will be, and in worst-case scenario, if it's not, and we vote this article through, the project just won't ever get started and the money will stay with the CPA funding. So there's no risk, we're not gonna get halfway into it and be stopped because we don't have the appropriate personnel. We need Ron to just even start the program. So I'm, I'm hoping that you'll be understanding of that. Think I've covered it all? Are there any questions? Yeah, oh, great. That was in my notes, yes, maintenance. So, the Park and Rec Committee has talked about putting a portable toilet out there, so that, so that will be one of the expenses that they will need to keep up with. Those run, I think they're about $120 a month or so. So that will be provided during the summer months. Ron has agreed to take the mowing on, you know, there'll be some minor weed-whacking and so forth around the area. And then the big maintenance issue is about every ten years, the courts need to be sealed, painted, or whatever, and that will cost about $10,000, give or take some.
Mike Haley-Baptist Hill. Just a couple of questions. It sounds, in a way, our group, and I know there's been things in the Currents and things about pickleballs provided. My question is, will there be something to, first of all, is it just for Conway residents? Or do people come from outside to play pickleball as well? That's question A. Question B is, if people wanna learn, is there enough notice of when and where there'd be instruction for other people? And do we provide our own equipment? And what does that run, or does the Park and Recreation provide all of that?
Yeah, yeah, all great questions. So, I forgot your first question already. Only Conway, yeah. So, no, it won't be limited to only Conway residents. Generally, community parks are not limited to residents unless there's some kind of limited parking space or whatever. But pickleball is a very wide community activity. We all, our current group travels to Deerfield, Greenfield, Shelton Falls, we play all over, we mix and match. One of the beauties of the sport is that you don't have your own little closed group that goes somewhere. You're, you're constantly meeting new people, interacting with new people, et cetera. It's, it's not a club, it's a community program. It's open to everybody. No club.
Okay. When you say we travel to someplace else to play, who are we?
We as pickleball players.
Okay.
Not together, but, you know, I play in every Franklin County town, as do other people. We, we also accept people into our community.
Okay. I just wanted to see how it's organized for people.
Yeah, so I'll talk a little more about the organization. So we do have a Facebook group, and we, to help try and gather people, we have a signup sheet, so that if you wanted to come play, you didn't have to go down the courts and hope that somebody else might have had the same thought at that moment. You can sign up and play and know when the groups are playing. And right now, we've had to limit our signup time because of sharing space with the tennis players and basketball players, so it's also important that you know when you can and can't play. So about the, about the beginners' lessons, we, on our Facebook, and, you know, have a, we have 207 Facebook members, and I save every email of everybody who signs up, so they get these email blasts of what's coming up, what's gonna happen, and we have been running beginner's sessions every Thursday night, where beginners are always welcome no matter when, but if they feel more comfortable coming to a beginner's session, we offer Oh, equipment, yes. So, the Park and Rec Committee voted to provide paddles and nets to us, so that's all available down, right now, currently at the ball field. It's in a little locked storage kit that, case that we give the combination out to anyone who's interested in playing.
Hi, thanks. Pickleball's great. I am a new member of the Open Space Committee in Conway, and of course, we're very concerned about flooding. Are you incorporating stormwater management devices into the design of the pickleball court?
So yes, Ron has told me that there will be perimeter drainage around it, including gravel and rocks, you know, just so that you can slow down the runoff from the pavement.
Yeah, since the microphone's right next to you, Lori, go ahead.
Lori Block, Baptist Hill. As a Parks and Recreation activity, not as an exclusively pickleball activity, but for the whole community of the town, all of this space is dedicated to one sport. Is there a way to make a design that if you even wanted to do a croquet court in this four-court space, you can't do it because all of them have pavement on them? Is there a way to make a more versatile surface so that more than one kind of game can be played in an area that involves maintenance, involves security issues, and others, other issues related to drainage, for example?
Yeah, so at this time, the select board and Ron were not turning over the entire lot to recreation. They're simply allowing this one thing to be added there. So, there really isn't a way to change the surface of what you can play pickleball on, we need that hard asphalt surface. But we have designed it in a way that it could be used for multiple purposes. For example, our fences will be only on the end, just as it is on the tennis courts on the ball field now, and then we'll have netting to close it in. So it leaves, it leaves it more open so that, you know, I think of whatever might happen there, you could have a concert there with some lawn chairs out on the grass to enjoy a concert. It's not really what we're designing it for. It is designed specifically for a pickleball court, but down the road, you never know it can come up, so we leave it open to some other opportunities.
Chris Penny. My concern isn't, is having this much activity traff- Okay. Oh, sorry. You can tell I'm new at this. The, the activity and the usage of, of all around the school, and having families and kids, and when you have playgrounds and open space, kids go to there, and they should. But who's responsible for that? I mean, when you, when you're taking a part of, of an area that's so close to the school and just opening it up for a sport, which is fine, but now I think it puts the school at jeopardy, and, and the safety, and vandalism, and, and upkeep, and, and all that, and it already has its own issues, so.
Mr. Modesto, would you mind speaking to that?
So I think, I mean, you have to be realistic, that you're adding a usage next to the school is going to cause more traffic and more people and that kind of thing, right? We're not gonna deny that. It was asked for my opinion, would the impact be a safety issue for the school? While there's more people and that, that could, you're, you're making a change, I, I don't see, based on how the courts are being used, the amount of traffic that would possibly be during the school day, where the school should step forward and say, "We're, we object to that." So I, I don't think it's my position to say yes or no to what you should decide as a town, or how to use your land, but I'm gonna tell you that the school's not getting in the way of this project. We, we're, the problems that we brought up have been addressed in the sense of the speed of traffic going by the school, that'd be the number-one safety concern, and then having proper signage to keep people from, you know, out of the school area during the school day. But again, pickleball, that kind of, if you're starting to expand this into a full park, that's a different story, because you're gonna have different kind of activities going on. But if we're to pickleball courts, like you said, you're not, people aren't gonna be out there at 9:00 AM, thirty people playing pickleball on a Tuesday morning. If, maybe, I don't think they are. So, that's, I guess, any more direct questions I'll answer, but that's the school's opinion overall.
Jim Moore, Main Street. In reference to the, the croquet, we have this very large recreation field, is like a backyard where generally people play croquet, that people could play there. I, I don't know why that wouldn't be a more appropriate place for that sport.
Hello. I'm Teresa Carter. I live on Parsons Road, and we have three little ones at Conway Grammar right now. And I guess my question is if, if it's possible to have a wider discussion with the school community in advance of this project. Like, I'm hearing that there wouldn't be a lot of traffic during school, but that is a concern for me, and I wonder if we were able to come up with some guidelines that we are, that we've written down. that we've written down, that we've all communicated, like, we don't want to have any tournaments during the school day. Or, you know, I mean, things that might seem obvious and that might not happen. I think it would put to ease some of the concerns that I have with my kids running around at the playground. Just for discussion.
Yeah, I did take a moment to gather a couple of numbers from Principal Gordon. And I believe we came up with a number of somewhere 70 to 80 cars currently coming through the school parking lot for pickup and drop-off now. So, I don't see that more than five or 10 cars would be coming during the middle of the day for pickleball. So, it's not really a big increase in traffic for pickleball.
Bob Baker. Ira Ban, South Park Road. To all folks that are concerned about the kids and speaking about it, kudos to you. That's the most important thing, and that's what should be talked about and prioritized the most. I think it's important to know who we are. I'd say 90 to 95% of us are in our 50s, 60s, and 70s world. Now, we like to play. Several of us have or currently serve on this Conway Grammar School Committee. Safety of our kids, and it's kind of corny, these are all our kids. And there's nothing more important. The majority of us have had our children come through this school, okay? We are not a random aggregate of people that are going to be speeding in and out of the school grounds. Also, we're a cohesive group. You know, as mentioned, we have a Facebook page, and we communicate with each other a lot. So, these are just words. What we'll do is we will be very proactive. We will ask... Oh, sorry about that. We will ask all concerned parties, "How are we doing if this is approved? Is there anything we should know about?" And you could contact us directly or on Facebook, and you could be sure. We will discuss it, and we will make adjustments. But the safety of our kids, we very much share that. Two other brief points. My family moved here 20 years ago. That's pretty brief compared to a lot of people here. I've never seen so many different people come together and play a game and get along from widely different backgrounds. It's amazing. And last point, a lot of us are old. It's good to move our bodies around. It's really fun, and we love having the high school kids come play with us, too. To a concern spoken about before, we are not an exclusive group. We are very welcoming. There's beginner teachings all the time. It looks like it's pretty popular. It's a very welcome committee. So, really hope we have the town's support. Thank you.
Hold on. We had a call... I heard a call of a question. Okay. We have a motion to call the question. That means that person has heard enough, and we've discussed this long enough. We have a motion and a second. So, right now, nothing else is going to happen, but we're going to vote on calling the vote on the question. Meaning, if you vote for calling the question, we're going to vote on this article. We're going to do that verbally, yes. Okay? So, all in favor of calling the question right now?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. So, on Part A of Article 27, that's what we're voting on right now. Voting is now open. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion is passed. 109 yes, 23 no, two abstentions.
Article 27B. I move that the town vote to appropriate or reserve for later appropriation. Monies from the Community Preservation Fund with each item considered a separate appropriation. From fiscal year 2025, annual revenue estimated 10% to the Community Preservation Historical Resources Reserve, $10,199.71 estimated. 10% to the Community Preservation Community Housing Reserve, $10,199.71 estimated. 10% to the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve, $10,199.71 estimated. 5% from fiscal year 2024, annual revenues for administration of the Community Preservation Committee, $5,999.85 estimated. And the remainder to the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve, $66,298.10 estimated.
Second. I have a motion to second. Discussion. Mary McLintock.
Excuse me. Howdy. I'm puzzled by why there isn't a 10% for the recreation line. There's four parts to Community Preservation Act. There's money that goes to each of those each year, and I don't see the rec line. And also, as always, it's really wonderful to hear how much is in each part, in the overall pool and in each pool. We heard that it was 1.7 million overall. It'd be really helpful to know there's X amount for housing, X amount for historic preservation, et cetera.
Lee Whitcomb from the Assessors Office, and Ashfield Road. You're absolutely right, Mary, and I think I would like to move to amend this motion to include, to add a line, adding 10% to the Community Preservation Recreation. I believe that would make it correct. And it would also be the amount of $10,199.71.
Estimated.
Estimated. These figures say estimated because at the time, we have to calculate the figure in order to have it published. That's what it was. But it's going to be within a couple of dollars of that, the final figure. The final figure is obtained by taking all of the monies that are collected, that are billed out as CPA fund, as a surcharge on our taxes. Jan said that was $113,000 this year. Then, when we do an abatement or an exemption, we have to deduct any Community Preservation Fund that got abated or exempted from that $113,000. So, that's what brings it down a little bit to $197 at that time, where I was doing the calculation. So, using these figures as solid figures is going to be fine as well. But I would like to present that motion that we add a line for an additional 10% reserve to recreation.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to address your point, Mary, which is very good about how many... How much is in each? And you all may have seen, one of the handouts was the Finance Committee. At the very end of it, it has the key account balances if all articles pass. And based on Mary's suggestion, for next year and every following year, I will put down all the CPC amounts by the different, you know, community and recreation and all that. Thank you.
And can you state your amendment proposal again, please?
I move to amend Article 27, Part B, to add an additional 10% reserve toward the Community Preservation Recreation Reserve, to be estimated at $10,199.71.
Would that be lowering the preservation, the remainder at the very end, down to $56,000?
Yes. So, that the remainder, the bottom line, the remainder going to the undesignated reserve would be $56,000... $100.
98. $56,098.30 and 39 cents?
Sounds good. Yes. I don't have my calculator with me, but I'm doing a little mental diagonal arithmetic here.
$56,098.39.
Okay, and I heard seconds for that? Jan?
So, the recreation part was an amendment in 2012. What do we do about all the other years missed? So, when Community Preservation was started, it had only three items. Recreation was added in 2012 to make four. Yep. Do we have to do any correction going backward?
Yeah, you can't do a correction going backward. You can add extra going forward.
Right. Okay, so...
So, it sounds like, in terms of this article, we can't do anything about the past, that we're just focused on this amendment now, sort of to make it something that's going forward. It seems like it's the task probably of the Select Board and the Town Administrator to figure out... My understanding is this 10% going into each pool is like a requirement, I thought, with the CPA. I may be wrong about that, that there... That money... Yeah, so somebody has to figure out, have we been out of compliance somehow with not putting money into that fund? And actually, I was curious when we were voting the pickleball, that that's from budgeted reserve and not from the rec line. And so, I don't know if we just haven't been putting money... I mean, have we not been putting money specifically into rec? That's a whole other question. But I don't know if any of this... I mean, this is... That's a whole bigger issue, particularly for this article. It sounds what Lee's proposing and what I sort of raised was, if we have four categories and do we have four reserve funds? We normally... It's like, this is normally... We don't have this discussion. It's like, oh, yeah, 10% goes into each of these funds. That's just typical. But... So, it raises some larger issues. I would support an amendment that puts it in... You know, if rec is one of the things that it supports, then we should be building that rec fund, just like we're building the Historic Preservation Fund and the other funds.
So, there is nobody from the CPC Commission here to answer the question specifically. But my understanding is that they would perceive a lot of this as distinctions without a difference, because that commission can allocate funding from the different budgeted categories to different budgeted categories. So, the fact that something is not in, you know, recreation reserve does not mean that they can't approve a project, a recreation project. Obviously, that's what we're here for. So, I mean, to the extent that there's an impression being created that monies haven't been saved in that one particular category, and therefore, maybe recreation's getting cheated a little bit, that's... My understanding is that that's not accurate, that recreation still gets to ask for whatever they want every year from the CPA.
Okay. I'm not sure that they do have the right to move within reserves. I think that may have to be voted at town meeting. But at any rate, any project that's presented and approved by the Community Preservation Commission cannot go forward without the approval of town meeting. So, no monies can actually be spent out of that entire 1.7 million without the final approval of us at town meeting.
On the amendment?
On the amendment.
Okay, we have a motion to move on the amendment. Want to do a voice?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. Okay, does everybody understand Lee's amendment to this? Okay. We are going to vote now on the amendment.
By voice.
By voice.
On the move.
Okay. By voice. So, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? That's pretty positive. The amendment passes. Now, we have a call of the question. All in favor of a call of the question?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Article 27B, as amended. Voting is open. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passed. 117 yes, 7 no, 2 abstentions.
Back to Article 8.
We're headed back to Article 8.
Article 8. I move that the town vote to transfer $100,000 from free cash to the Fire Truck Stabilization Fund.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you, Darius. Discussion. Hearing done. Let's vote. Not trying. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article 8 passes. 116 yes, 2 no, 5 abstentions.
Article 9. I move that the town vote to appropriate $100,000 from free cash for the purchase of a side entry-exit rubber tire compact loader.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Yeah, where is this entry, side entry-exit? What building? Where?
Just means a loader you can enter or exit from side doors instead of a front door.
Yeah, that's just a safety issue if you...
Is it a vehicle?
Yes, this is a vehicle.
Yes.
It's a compact loader that has multiple attachments. You can see on here on the handout.
It's on your handout.
It's a critical piece of equipment. It's one of the most used. If you look at the attachments on there, you'll see there's like a street sweeper, bucket trucks. It also has... Yeah. And just to let you know, the reason for the side entry is a safety reason. If you have, let's say, a bucket on the front and the loader breaks down, there's no way for the operator to get out.
Any other discussion?
Here we go.
Robert Baker.
Robert Baker, Elm Street. One quick question about this loader is, is the trading value in... Robert Baker, Elm Street. One quick question about this loader is, is the trade-in value included in this dollar amount? I notice on your handout, it says that the old vehicle had a trade-in value. Is that included in that or not?
Yes, the trade-in value and the municipal discount are included. The trade-in value is approximately, we believe, 21,500.
Any other?
So do we have any attachments that go to this already that would fit it from the equipment we already have?
Yes, yes. And unfortunately, the attachments that we do have will only fit the current loader, which is problematic, to say the least. The new loader that we're requesting would be able to take all attachments. It includes forks, pickup sweeper, stump grinder, a grapple bucket, a snow blower, hydraulic hammer, a Harley rake, and so on.
Any other? Okay, let's vote. Article nine, voting's open. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article passes, 109 yes, 14 no, seven abstentions.
Article 10, I moved that the town vote to appropriate $100,000 from the free cash for the purchase of a plow truck, a one-ton, four-door, short-bed, six-cylinder diesel plow truck with new V-plow.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Hello, this Kylie Angel. Quick question. Have any alternatives such as hybrids been, like vehicles, been considered in these discussions? Just out of curiosity.
Yes, the unfortunate part about hybrids or electric is the, the road conditions that we have in town. I believe over half of our roads are gravel. They don't work very well in that, especially when you're talking about a large vehicle with a huge plow pushing a ton of snow. That's why diesel's being, yes.
Any other? Okay, let's vote. Article 10. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article 10 passes, 106 yes, 19 no, three abstentions.
Article 11, I moved that the town vote to transfer and appropriate $85,000 from capital stabilization for the purchase of a police cruiser. The amount includes upfitting.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We're coming.
Ben Everly, 98 River Street. I'm just, am I crazy? Didn't we just buy a cruiser about five or six years ago? Am I, am I totally missing that?
Yes, and the current cruiser will be a backup. The reason why it's being requested is because there are six officers and one cruiser. And if you look at the information that was handed out, this is a chart that was prepared by Chief Bates, and it shows you the number of cruisers from adjacent towns with population comparable to Conway, and we're very much at the bottom of the list.
I saw that. How often, maybe the chief, please speak to it, how often are there calls for, you know, police officers to be in multiple places at multiple times?
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
How many times a year annually are there calls for the department to be in multiple places and multiple times requiring multiple cruisers? We can have Chief Bates answer that, but I just want to say, the issue is there's no contingency in place. If the cruiser breaks down, we have no other option. And it, it did break down a couple of years ago. I believe there were 34 calls that couldn't be made because of that. But Chief Bates, you can answer his question.
Hi, everybody. I'm Don Bates, chief of police. I don't have an accurate number. I didn't think that was going to be a question that would be asked, is how many calls we get annually. Right now, we do have the one car, so if we get a call, we go to it. The big issue that I've got is when that car goes down for service, which if it gets into a crash, we have no way of getting there, and we are not going to be using our personal vehicles because it's, it's just not okay for doing it. I don't believe town insurance covers that if something were to happen to our personal vehicles if we're on a call. I wish I had the numbers for you as far as how many calls. If we had more cruisers, we could probably respond to more calls, but we don't, so we just handle it the way it is.
Does that answer your question then? Okay, thanks.
Hi, Howard Boyden again. As a member of the fire department, I can tell you, it's been many, many times that either on Route 116 or the interconnecting road, Shelburne Falls, Road, Wateley Road, et cetera, where we have certainly wished that we could have had a police cruiser on each end of a fire or accident scene. And right now, if we need that, we have to rely on state cruisers, which can be as much as 45 minutes out. And it takes our manpower or our vehicles to shut down the road, and people are not as responsive to red flashing lights as they are to blue lights, like it or not. I think this is something that's, uh, that's been a long time coming, and we need to move forward with it.
I have one question for Don, is when one of the officers is out on detail work with the utilities or something like that, you know, keeping them safe while they're working along the roadside, the cruiser's there?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
That would be ideal, to have a second cruiser there. But where we only have one, if I'm working, which is my 40-hour shift during the week, I'm not giving up my cruiser so somebody can have it on a detail because I need to respond to emergencies. So if we had the second car, we can allow that car to then go out and at least be visible, and we will charge for the use of that cruiser moving forward in July 1st.
Drew Angel, is there any thought to this cruiser being electric or hybrid vehicle? There was thought to it, but Chief Bates, I mean, you can answer this, but the, the other municipalities that have had hybrids and electrics have had multiple issues, and we're trying to avoid that.
Why don't you do Robin Yerkes? Robin Yerkes, Route 116.
Move that a little closer.
Okay, Robin Yerkes, why don't you just say how many cruisers other communities have?
So there's a, yeah, there's a presentation here with the capital improvement presentation. You'll see on there, the municipalities, how many full and part-time police officers they have in relation to how many cruisers. There's only one town with only one cruiser.
Hi, having just moved here, it's incredible that we only have one cruiser. Redundancy is important for safety. Safety is our highest priority for our children and also for our citizens, so gotta have another cruiser.
Gail?
Gail Cullen?
Hold on, we just had a call of the question. So go ahead and finish.
I, I, Huzick Road. I just wanted to say, the statistics for the calls are in the town report, if anybody wanted to read them. Yeah, that Kenny did, you know, for 2023.
Okay, we have a call of the question. Okay, let's vote on calling the question. This will be a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's vote on Article 11. I will remind you, this is a two-thirds vote.
You may need to swap clippers, your battery may have.
It was sleeping.
Yes.
Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion's passed, 123 yes, no, six, abstentions, two. We've achieved two-thirds.
Article 12, I moved that the town vote to transfer $50,000 from free cash to the general stabilization fund.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting's closed. Motion passes, 117 yes, two no, five abstentions.
Article 13, I moved that the town vote to transfer $100,000 from free cash to the ambulance stabilization fund towards the purchase of a new ambulance.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes, 123 yes, two no, no abstentions.
Article 14, I moved that the town vote to transfer $36,646 from the ambulance receipts fund to the ambulance department operational expenses account for a parcel payment for these expenses.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Let's vote on this. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Motion passes, 124 yes, zero no's, two abstentions.
Article 15, I moved that the town vote to appropriate $9,950 from free cash for preliminary study of town streetlights by an energy consultant with the goal of saving money and reducing your carbon footprint.
I have a motion in the, in a second. Any discussion? Lee?
With regard to streetlights, I have a concern about Academy Hill Road, where the town hall is located and where our parking lot is located, several doors down the road. Currently, there is one streetlight at the intersection of Academy Hill and Main Street, and there's one way down by the parking lot. In between, there's a sidewalk, yes. It's somewhat irregular. At one point, a utility pole comes right up in the middle of it, and there's also a considerably sized storm drain there. And if the neighbor didn't have those little solar lights on his fence posts, it would be very difficult to make out the solar drain, I mean, the, the storm drain. So as part of this, I would like to ask for, if this passes, the consultants' report on where we need to have a little bit more street lighting. Thank you.
Back there.
Hi, Pam Westgate, Hidden ledge Drive. I hear your request for a lighting study, but I think that's a different scope of work and would cost a lot more than what I'm seeing in Article 15. So maybe somebody could speak to what exactly we'd be getting for, for this particular article and why we couldn't get one of the energy companies to possibly do the work for us for free.
Hi, I'm Beth Gershman. I'm part of the Sustainability Committee. We were formed in 2023. There's five of us. We were appointed. A number of us are here today. So, Lee, I'm not going to address this specifically. I'm going to actually address the particulars of this request. So, just historically, after the Sustainability Committee was formed, the select board asked us to look at the possibility of converting our current 68 high-pressure sodium streetlights to LED lights in order to save money and energy. So this particular request is to hire an energy consultant. The scope of the work would include GIS mapping, photometric design, and industrial-grade audit of all streetlights, all current 68 streetlights in town. There would be bids for light fixtures, the types of bulbs, the companies, and maintenance options. So, we're asking for this money for the preliminary study. This is not eligible for grant funding. If we came back to you with a bigger proposal for a full-on conversion to save energy and money, then that would be eligible for grants. We'd be coming back to you in the fall at another town meeting. I have a lot of information about this. I'm not sure how much people's appetite is to hear about this. I heard Pam's question about whether existing energy company, I presume you mean Eversource, could do the work for free. Eversource could do the work for free, kind of, sort of. Their options, however, are very limited. They're limited to one type of LED bulb at a certain wattage, a certain color range, and they are not dimmable lights. As a committee, we spent a lot of time looking at what other towns in our area are doing. We had a lot of assistance from Shelburne, who just went through this process, and they have a presentation that we can share with you at any point in time. It's pretty extensive information. I'm looking at Jody, who's one of the members of our Sustainability Committee. So the Eversource option, while it's free for the conversion work, it is not free for the maintenance costs, and it does not have a choice in the type of bulbs. What we're hoping to come out of this with, this study, is that we would have a better quality of light in town. Many of us are not affected by streetlights because we don't live in a, on a road where there are streetlights. Most of the streetlights are on 116 and in the town neighborhoods, town center. But we're all affected by it because we pay for energy costs. So there's a, a bunch to this. We're looking at improving the quality of street lighting in Conway, how it affects people's houses, safety, as well as the energy costs and the appearance of it, basically. Are there questions? I see some questions. There?
Cecilia Van Dreish, Wateley Road. It was really helpful at pre-town meeting when you shared the number of streetlights in Conway versus Ashfield and other comparable towns. That was really helpful for me. versus Ashfield and other comparable towns. That was really helpful for me.
That's interesting for people. So Shelburne, if you're, imagine Shelburne in your mind, which is both Shelburne that you're used to, maybe shopping in and going to and touristing around in and having fun in, as well as their, what they call their Shelburne Village Center, I think, which is farther out. Shelburne, well, there's Shelburne Falls, there's Shelburne, then there's another, like, part of it, right? Shelburne Center. They have 100 streetlights total, and that includes stuff on Route 2. Ashfield, our neighbor, they have 17 streetlights. Conway has 68. A number of our existing streetlights are like a historical pattern. They're from places that were important when they were installed. For example, there's some streetlights that helped students from the original grammar school get to the gym at town hall. Neither of those things are used anymore, but the streetlights still exist. The members of our committee met with our police chief, as well as Ron Sweet, our highway department manager, administrator, and talked about safety and where lights are needed, where lights might not be needed. This study that we're proposing would look more seriously at all these issues. We would be having an informational forum for everybody in town to come and give their opinions and thoughts and share more information about that. Does that answer your question? Okay, thanks.
Beth, how much does the town currently spend on those 70 streetlights in that neighborhood with no shops or tourist attractions?
The 68 streetlights, how much do we spend?
Yes.
We spend between $9,000 and $11,000 a year.
Thank you.
Drew Angel, I'm not part of the committee, but I was present, I believe, when this was initially brought up. And from what I recall, we were talking about when Shelburne did a similar audit of their lights, and they found that when compared with the list that Eversource had, there were lights that existed that were not paid for, and there were many lights that did not exist that they were paying for, and that the records, going back decades, were just a complete mess.
Yes, there is some discrepancy between what, we actually did a mapping initially of this, thanks to Jody and a volunteer who isn't here today, but, because she's in Australia. But anyway, so there's, it's not like she's not elected. What was I going to say? Sorry.
Jody found that there were two streetlights at the Fields Library that we were being charged for that were decommissioned.
Right, so there's some discrepancies between our records, Eversource records. Historically, it's, I wouldn't call it a complete mess, there's just some confusion. Any, any study that gets done will straighten all this out. And I just want to add, emphasize again, we are hoping to be able to eliminate some of this 68 streetlights.
Okay, I heard a call of the question. Okay, we're going to vote right now on calling the question. It's going to be a voice vote. All in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Opposed? I guess we're going to vote on Article 15. Let's vote. Thank you. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article 15 passes, 110 yes, 14 no, four abstentions.
Article 16, I move that the town vote to authorize the following fiscal year 25 expenditure limits for the Town of Conway revolving funds pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 and 1/2 in the Town of Conway Bylaw. Up to $5,000 from the Medicaid Revolving Fund, up to $6,000 from the Dog Licenses Fund, up to $10,000 from the Newsletter Revolving Fund, and up to $20,000 from the Conway Youth Sports Program Revolving Fund.
I have a motion in a second, discussion? Let's vote. Article 16. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article passes, 115 yes, two no, six abstentions. Okay. First of all, I'd like everybody in this room, if you want to, to stand up. We're going to do a minute standing. While, while we're standing, there's a Subaru in the parking lot with a license plate of 791-AS. That needs to move. You're blocking somebody else who can't leave. Please. Better stop while I turn on the light. Really? Okay, we can sit back down.
Right now, we probably got like 50.
Okay. Article 17. I move that the town vote to revoke the opioid settlement stabilization fund and transfer any dedicated funds to the opioid settlement special revenue fund as per the Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53, Clause 4, and as authorized by the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, Director of Accounts.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Hi, Rebecca Schorff, Boydin Road. I just was wondering what, really briefly, what this is and what the money is used for to help our community members?
Good afternoon. I think we're at afternoon. As everybody is probably aware, there has been opioid use litigation that towns were involved in, and those cases were settled. And part of the settlement agreement with those funds could only be used for certain matters. So DOR, the Department of Revenue, last year had us rush and hurry and set up these stabilization accounts so that we had an account that was designated and that we could get the money into. After reviewing it for this year, they determined that a special fund account was a probably more appropriate vehicle for these funds. So all we're doing here is taking the money that was put in the stabilization account last year and then transferring to what we've now determined is a better vehicle for accounting within the town to a special fund. They'll still be limited use. They'll still have to abide by the agreement, but it's just a different fund for those to sit in.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. It's Article 17. We need two-thirds, by the way. Excuse me. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Passes, 106 yes, one no, two abstentions.
Article 18, I move that the town vote to transfer $20,000 from free cash into the OPEB Trust Fund so that the town may meet retirement costs of current and future retirees.
I have a motion in a second, discussion? Let's vote. Article 18. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article 18 passes, 96 yes, six no, one abstention.
Article 19, I move that the town vote to transfer $11,755 from free cash to pay for the partial debt service for the highway garage facility.
I have a motion in a second, discussion? Let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article 19 passes, 104 yes, four no, one abstention.
Article 20, I move that the town vote to authorize the treasurer and collector to enter into compensating balance agreements.
I have a motion in a second, discussion? Explanation, please.
Basically, these are treasurer and collector agreements that they enter into with banks for three years or more, and because under the law, town meeting has to approve three-year contracts, we do this annually just to make sure they have the authorization.
Any other discussion? Let's vote. Article 20. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article 20 passes, 108 yes, one no, one abstention.
Article 21, I move that the town vote to transfer $6,000 from free cash as a partial contribution for the future revaluation work account.
I have a motion in a second, discussion? Explanation, please.
Lee Whitcomb, Assessor's Office. Every year now, the values in town have changed so much that it's been essentially a revaluation every year. We've had to call in consultants to make sure that our adjustments are correct and to revalue the, double-check the values on the hydroelectric plant and so forth. Right at the moment, because of changes in the state regulations on pilot agreements, our consultant is looking at the agreement that we had with Nexamp for the large solar array in town and how much that's paying in taxes. So we have annual expenses. In the past, we always asked for $5,000 a year, but times have changed, and we now need to ask for six to go into this account on a regular basis. And our big revaluation in 2027 will be pretty well fully funded ahead of time by doing this. We try and keep up with it rather than having a terrible surprise for you.
Any other discussion? Let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article passes, 106 yes, two no, one abstention.
Article 22, I move that the town vote to transfer $2,920 from free cash to the Field Memorial Library to help ensure its accreditation.
I have a motion in a second, discussion?
Amanda Kirk, Roaring Brook Road. I'm wondering why we're only allocating the bare minimum to keep the library in this CW-Mars system? Why aren't we allocating more money to such an important town resource?
Howard Boydin, again. You guys are going to get sick of hearing from me. I can speak to that as Chair of the Field Memorial Library Trustees. This Field Memorial Library is not your average, normal public library. It was bequeathed to the Town of Conway as a monument to the parents of Marshall Field, by Marshall Field. He did leave some money behind, which is wearing a little thin, but basically to keep the monument preserved and keep the library running, actually, in town. We, to get into CW Mars and whatnot, had to start taking this money, which is off of state aid, for the most part. And we have to match it. And we felt, because of the mission that we are supposed to carry out under the laws of incorporation for Field Memorial Library, that we are to provide a free and public library for the Town of Conway. We're doing our level best to do that and maintain the monument. So that's why we're staying at the minimum as of right now. It's basically because of the way that the library was set up for the Town of Conway. And we're trying to keep the Field family's wishes to the best of our knowledge and to the best of our ability. Any other? Let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article passes one hundred and six yes, one no, one abstention.
Article twenty-three. I move that the town vote to rescind the appropriation and authorized borrowing of Article III of the December ninth, 2023, special town meeting, which was to pay for the cost of road repair after the July 2023 floods.
I have a motion in a second. Discussion or explanation?
So, I mean, we can, there's a bunch of us. This is amazing. Very happy and proud to be able to do this. This was the borrowing article that we gave that the town meeting authorized the Select Board and town government to borrow, which then was obviated or proved unnecessary by virtue of the state's supplemental budgetary amount to the Town of Conway of 1.245 million dollars. So we're able to use that money instead of borrowing money that you had authorized us to. So we're asking that you rescind that authorization since we never spent a penny of it.
If you were here during our last meeting last year, last year during the meeting, when we asked to borrow the money, we stated that if we didn't need the money, we would rescind. So we're trying to keep our promise.
Any other discussion? Let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article passes one hundred and nine yes, one no, and no abstentions.
Article twenty-four. I move that the town vote to allow the Select Board to apply for, accept, and expend state, federal, and other grants, which do not require a town appropriation or town meeting approval.
I have a motion in a second. Discussion? Let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article passes ninety-seven yes, six no, five abstentions.
Article twenty-five. I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift a permanent easement as printed in the warrant.
Did I miss a second? Here's, I have a motion in a second. Discussion? Second. Let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article twenty-five passes ninety-seven yes, six no, two abstentions.
Article twenty-six. I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift a permanent easement, again, as printed in the warrant.
I have a motion in a second. Discussion?
Just confirming it's a gift. It's not going to be a purchase because in the warrant, here it says by purchase, possibly.
Any other discussion? Let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article passes one hundred and two yes, five no, one abstention.
Skipping to Article twenty-eight. I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Conway revolving funds bylaw by adding the transfer station revolving fund as presented in the warrant.
I have a motion in a second. Discussion? Let's vote. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article passes ninety-nine yes, five no, three abstentions.
Article twenty-nine. I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the Town of Conway bylaw, Town Officers, Boards, and Committees, Section Two, as presented in the warrant.
I have a motion in a second. Discussion? Explanation?
Zoning, just what everybody wants to talk about at the end of the meeting. My name is Jeff Lacy. I'm on the planning board. George Forcer, the Chair, couldn't be here today, so he asked me to present these two articles. Sure. So I'll be presenting these two articles. By law, the planning board had to write a report at least three weeks before town meeting and deliver it to town meeting. So there are copies out there. It's a very short report. So I think what I'll do is, because it covers everything, is just read the report very quickly. So Planning Board Report, Articles Twenty-nine and Thirty for this town meeting. Article twenty-nine, the first one, is a general bylaw amendment. Article thirty is a zoning bylaw amendment. Both articles are developed and sponsored by the Planning Board. The Planning Board, after holding a public hearing on May 21st, where no testimony was received, recommends passage of both articles as follows. Article twenty-nine, this is the general bylaw, simple majority vote, general bylaw. This article amends Section Two of Conway's general bylaws to allow non-residents to be appointed as associate board members, but not as regular members. Associate members are important as they fill in for regular members when there are absences, conflicts of interest, or vacancies. In practice, this option will apply only to the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. We're having a full quorum is essential, especially for permitting purposes, which is what we do. I'm not sure if there are any other boards with associate members in town, but we think these are the only two. Currently, only Conway residents may serve in any capacity on a local board. This amendment provides the Select Board with additional flexibility where deemed to be in the interest of the town. To appoint a non-resident to an associate member position, the amendment does not establish any rights of non-residents to run for elected positions. Strictly appointed associate members appointed by the Select Board. Keeping seats filled on volunteer boards can be challenging, and this is an increasing problem, from what I've been told in town. Planning Board may come up with an empty seat after the election on Thursday unless someone stages a vigorous write-in campaign for that seat. This option may help in certain circumstances. It is expected that appointments of non-residents to associate positions will most often occur when a longstanding member of the Planning Board or Zoning Board of Appeals moves on from Conway but still wishes to serve the town. In our case, we feel this is a good policy overall, and it will help us keep our longstanding associate member, Joe Strigowski, who has moved to Waitley but still wishes to serve as an associate member on the Conway Planning Board because he's been doing it for 50 years in one way or another in town. He wishes to continue. Unless we pass this amendment, he can't do that. Another example of that is me. I only moved here in September and stepped down from the Zoning Board of Appeals Chair in Chootsbury, but Select Board there appointed me as an associate so I could stay on that board for a while until it stabilized, until they got another member, and then I'll step off. But I've had years of experience, and they wanted me to continue, and I was able to. So this would allow the same thing here. And again, it's all vetted by the Select Board. So that's twenty-nine. I could hold off on thirty until that comes up, I guess.
Yeah, I think that would be good. Any other discussion? Article twenty-nine.
Gina McNeely, Main Holland Road. I am stridently opposed to this amendment, to this motion. I don't think outsiders, especially as voting members on any of our boards should be allowed. Also, these are appointed people. So if I know so-and-so on one of these boards, and they're, they live in Amherst, and I want them to be on the board, they can be appointed. They're not even elected by the residents of Conway. So we have outsiders voting on issues that involve all of us when they're not residents and they're not even voted into the position. Thank you.
Troy?
Troy Lucier, Old Cricket Hill. I'm under the impression that not everybody on the Select Board is in favor of this. Is that something that was true that I overheard from someone?
So, yes, Chris Waldo. So, yes, I was initially opposed to this, to both of these articles. One, because they were presented less than two months ago, so some considerable research was needed to even understand the legality of it. That, as of this morning, has been confirmed that this is a legal move. I still do oppose it for the reason of, I don't particularly think that we should have non-residents on any board where they can vote. And I also don't believe policies, especially bylaws, should be changed for an individual.
And then I see you, Andy.
Bruce Bowman, Tru Street. I'm confused. I thought they wouldn't be voting members. Are they going to be voting members or will they not be voting members?
Associate members can still vote on special projects and under certain conditions, such as vacancies.
If the voting, if the associate member's called up by the Chair to fill a vacancy, conflict of interest, or incapacity, then they would vote on the particular special permit that they're called up to fill in for the member on.
Andy Jaffe, Academy Hill Road, former Planning Board member. I just say that it's been made very clear that this is a motion to accommodate our continuing access to the incredible experience and expertise of Joe Strigowski. And it's, he's done so many things and knows about so much. I can remember planning board meetings where we all looked to him for guidance and understanding and history of whatever issue we were discussing. So I think, to that end, it's really important to pass it.
Hi, I'm Mary McLintock. I was really happy to serve with Andy Jaffe, and I adore Joe Strigowski. I adore Joe Strigowski. It's actually fairly bizarre feeling to have Jeff Lacy speaking for the Planning Board and not to have the Mary and Joe show talking about whatever bylaw revision we're going to do. And I oppose this article because I think, I know there can be an issue with quorum. I know there can be, you know, an issue of whatever. But I, again, I agree with Gina that changing it for one person. Joe Strigowski is the encyclopedia of Conway government. And having him be, to be able to talk about things, attend meetings, provide historical reference context, fabulous. But I think it sets a very strange precedent to have a non-resident as a voting member on a town board. You know, Jeff, you know, zoning board in Chootsbury, you could well have been going to meetings and helping people get themselves sorted out and not voting. Same with Joe in this situation. What I'm not hearing, what I, you know, in my eight years on the Planning Board, this did not come up of, oh, my God, we can't get a quorum. We voted on any number of special permits where we had to have a quorum. We had to have the whatever. And it was not an issue that we didn't have enough people to actually vote. And when we needed expertise from someone, whether it was Joe or someone outside, we got that expertise without having that person be a voting member.
Is it on? Yes. The reason the associates need to be able to vote, I mean, that's, that's almost the reason to have associates. Not so they can participate in informal discussions or policy matters, but there are certain classes of permits, especially variances and special permits that require super majorities in order to be approved. And on a five-member Planning Board, four out of five have to vote for a special permit in order for it to be approved. And if you lose a member, then you have four, and it has to be four out of four unanimous. Every member is, could be a Little Caesar and just throw their project. There's really no room for error. If you are down two, you can't even take action on something. So it puts you in a real bind. And so that's why they have to be able to vote because the state law requires certain majorities to vote on certain things. And you need to have the board members in place to do that.
Let me make three quick points and maybe propose an amendment that could be a solution. I'm Julia Stone from, off of Tru Street. I'm Julia Stone from, off of Truce Road. So the point, I was going to object to this article even before I knew who the person was, and you kind of make us feel that with that person leaving, however wonderful he is, the whole board, the whole commission will be paralyzed and not be able to make decisions. I guess maybe it's a good idea that the person's leaving so the rest of the planning board can step up and learn things and be active and not rely on one person to do the job and maybe make some effort to recruit new people who are in town. New folks move into town all the time. We have some, looks like new active folks right here today, and some of them will step up and learn. It is very unwise to change the laws to accommodate a person, however wonderful that person is. This opened doors to corporate interests to come in, to state interests to come in, and it might take some time, but the town is already on the slippery slope outsourcing its services and its governing. So before long, we might wake up and find out that we have very little agency left if we continue to go like that. So instead of relying on legislation as a solution, maybe it would be wiser if the boards or the board of selection apply, or put in more effort to recruit people, to, to tell folks and the community about the boards and the work that needs to be done and expand its outreach. So we get new people to participate in, in our self-governing. So in short, more action and less regulation. And lastly, let me put it this way. If you and I are good neighbors, and a tree in your yard is shading my cucumber patch, I can ask you to take it down, I can ask you to trim it, but I don't get a vote to decide on your family budget to spend your money to hire a tree service to come and take down the tree so it benefits me. So it needs to be, we can't allow the non-residents to vote. If you read the article in the warrant the way it's now, the second part, the addition, the part that's underlined, contradicts the first part. The first part says only Conway residents shall vote. The second part says associate members will be allowed to vote. That's a conflict. Associate members are called associates, not full members, because they are there to give their opinion, to participate. They do not get to vote.
Okay, thank you. There's, we've got asked to move the question. We're going to move the question. We're going to vote on that. We're moving the question. So we're going to vote on moving the question. It's going to be a voice vote. All in favor of moving the question?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to vote on Article 29, so we're clear. Go ahead and vote. Voting is closed. Article 29 has failed. 21 yes, 79 no, six abstentions.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Conway. Article 6, Administration, Section 62, as presented in the warrant.
Motion and second. Discussion?
Okay, buoyed by my earlier success, we'll move on to the next article here. Article 30. This really doesn't do anything but establish the, the status quo of the planning board right now, the way, the way it exists. This language is common in zoning bylaws and even in general bylaws across the state. And what it says is this article fixes an existing omission by amending Article 6, Section 62 of Conway's zoning bylaws to add the planning board to this section that currently only includes the zoning board of appeals. The amendment establishes the planning board as an elected five-member board, which it is, and with one appointed associate member that may act on all matters within its jurisdiction. Language such as this is common in Massachusetts zoning bylaws. So this doesn't have anything to do with out-of-town associates. It just establishes somewhere in writing what the planning board is, how many members, that they're elected, that they can have an associate that's appointed. That's it.
Any other discussion?
Thanks, Jacob Carter, Parsid Road. I was just curious about the appointment process.
I actually noticed that and have a floor amendment that could deal with it if the town council believes it's a problem.
It's by statute. Chapter 41, Section 109 provides that the select board appoints the associate member.
Okay, that's, that's all the amendment would have put in too, that it was the select board.
Yeah, and it's already statutory.
Stein, Fike, Shelburne Falls Road. The underlined part of this says five elected members and one appointed by the select board associate member, but the next paragraph says there is hereby established, blah, 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 three members and two associate members.
That's the zoning board of appeals. The first one's the planning board.
Thank you very much.
And the zoning board of appeals already in there.
Jimmy, can I say something? Jimmy?
Sure.
So I just want to make a comment as somebody who's on two town committees. I chair two of them, and I'm also on zoning board of appeals. I appreciate that everybody wants control to be within Conway, but we need, we need people to step up and join committees. That's really what it's all about. So we wouldn't even be considering any of these, any of these articles if our committees were, were fully staffed, and they're not. So if you have some time, please consider it. And I have to tell you from my own experience, I mean, I haven't lived in Conway for 35 years. We moved here in 19, 2020, and the support that you get from the town administrator and the town employees is fantastic. It takes some of your time, but the reason to consider doing it is for all of us. So again, we wouldn't, if all of our committees were, were fully staffed, we wouldn't even be considering these warrant articles. And by the way, I did do research and outreach to try to recruit people for the personnel committee, which the town hadn't had since 2018. The town employee manual has not been updated since 2016. We only had a full committee when existing people on other committees volunteered to be on personnel committee. So that, that's the reality. So please consider stepping up.
Any other discussion? Article 30. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article 30 passes. 81 yes, 18 no, five abstentions.
Article 31. I move that the town vote to authorize and request the select board to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth for Home Rule Legislation to establish a special fund for the Festival of the Hills receipts for the town of Conway, and further to approve any recommended changes from Senate or House Counsel or Senator or Local Representative as presented in the town warrant.
I have a motion and a second. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. Article 31 passes. 96 yes, four no, two abstentions.
Article 32. I move that the town vote to adopt the general bylaw establishing a Festival of the Hills Committee for the town as presented in the warrant.
I have a motion and a second. Let us vote.
It is now. It wasn't clicking.
Well, I said one, so, and everybody else said 12, so, you know, we should have bet. We've had a pool.
Five more seconds.
Would you settle for a drink at the end?
Voting is closed. 95 yes, three no, no abstentions.
I move that the town vote to authorize and request the select board to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth for Home Rule Legislation to allow any citizens in the town of Conway, notwithstanding the provisions of Massachusetts General Law 51, Sections 1 and Section 47A, who have reached the age of 16 or older to register and vote in municipal elections within the town.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Hi, I'm Jessica Corwin, Sunderland School Committee Chair and Frontier Regional School Appointed Member. This is Josephine Silva. We are not registered Conway voters, so we need to ask permission.
Okay. We have apparently two people at two minutes apiece, that's four minutes out of our long lives, that would like to address town meeting, and they're not from town. I'm going to go with a voice vote, and I'm going to ask if it's okay.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, sure.
Hello, my name is Josie Silva. I live in Sunderland, and I'm a 7th grader at Frontier. I'm one of the students who have worked on the citizens petition to lower the voting age to 16, along with other friends and adults. We've gathered signatures to put this issue on the town meeting warrant for Sunderland, Deerfield, Conway, and Whately. Sunderland passed their article to lower the voting age at the end of April. Deerfield came within three votes of passing theirs at town meeting. I'm sorry, we don't have more teenagers to read this right now. It's hard on a Saturday. My friends and I, her friends, think that giving voting rights to 16 and 17-year-olds would be good for everyone, but because it would get them in the habit of voting before they get even busier, making it more likely that they will vote consistently as adults. They would get to learn more about town politics and town meetings while still living in their home communities where they already care about the issues around them. I know that some people think that 16 is too young to be responsible enough to vote. I wonder if you believe that every 18-year-old is responsible enough? What about every 25-year-old? Knowledge and experience are not requirements for voting eligibility. 16-year-olds have many adult rights in Massachusetts, including working a full-time job, paying taxes, getting married, driving a car, and owning and running a business. 16 and 17-year-olds are subject to all of the laws but have no say in making them. If this article passes, Conway Select Board will ask Natalie Blay and Paul Mark to file a home rule petition with the state legislature, which must be approved before 16 and 17-year-olds can actually start voting here. Other towns and cities have filed similar petitions with the state without any response, and they hope adding our frontier regional towns to this group will force the legislature to act. In other words, the town of Conway could eventually be the reason teenagers in Boston, Lowell, Cambridge, Brooklyn, Southborough, and North Hampton get to vote in their own municipal elections.
In cities and towns where the voting age has been lowered to 16, including in Maryland, Colorado, California, Vermont, and New Jersey, voter participation rates increased in all age groups. Here in the Frontiers District, officials and educators have expressed interest in providing public workshops for eligible voters of all ages if this passes. This petition would not allow people under 18 to vote in state or federal elections nor run for any office.
Please vote yes on this article to build our current and future democracy. Uh, sorry. Thank you.
We'll get to you.
Hi, everybody. Again, Julia Washburn, New Hall Road, just moved here from the state of Maryland, where we have the voting ages, 16 for municipal, for municipal elections. In my community, Tacoma Park, Maryland, it has been great. The students, the young people ages 16, have really turned out to vote. It's getting them involved in democracy, as I said earlier, in their lives, and a lot of these young people are incredibly interested in what's going on in their community and getting involved at both in, at the municipal level and at other levels. They are very passionate about a lot of, you know, a lot of issues, and we've seen nothing but good things in Tacoma Park, Maryland with it.
Thank you. Chris Penny in Boyding Road. I commend any, any young people that have things to say and, and should, and they should be part of this, and I encourage the participation in town meetings and municipal activities and voting things. My concern is if they're voting at town meetings, they're also voting on taxes and, and a life that affects the adults more so than the 16-year-olds. I'm not, I'm not confident yet, and I don't quite know how to, to separate this in my own head, because I really think it is important that young people do participate, and they should be encouraged and listened to, and they should be respected for their opinions. But I'm not sure about the voting, so.
The way I read it, it talks about municipal elections and doesn't talk about town meeting. Can somebody clarify whether this is just the elections, like what's happening on Thursday, what we're all going to do from 11 to 7 on Thursday, as opposed to being here? Is that what, does anybody have a clarification on that?
Did they leave?
It's intended to include town elections, a town meeting.
It's intended to include town meetings.
They could amend it to add town meetings.
Mike?
I think it's a great thing, too. I just say that in my own growing up, which I'm a village idiot anyway, I was taught at an early age to follow the leader, which were my parents, and because I didn't know enough about side entry, front loaders, or hundreds. And because I didn't know enough about side entry, front loaders, or $100,000 things to really have an opinion, so I had to follow my parents. And that's my only trepidation, really, about this kind of a situation, is that not enough information is in the life of a 16-year-old. I know that my interests were anything but municipal goings-on. It took everything to get me to read something beyond the sports section of a newspaper. So I'm just saying that, you know, it may not have the full equipment, but you could also, if you're a parent that wants to misuse certain things, could just tell your kid to follow along with you and use that vote that way for something you want, which isn't
We have a move to carry the question?
Yeah, I'd like to carry the question.
To what?
I wanted to make a motion to add the town meeting.
Amend.
As an amendment to the current question.
Section.
We have a motion and a second to amend this to include the words "town meeting", so it clarifies the article, the motion. Anybody got a comment on that? On amending it?
Jimmy, can I make a comment?
Yep.
I just want to concur with Mary's comment regarding, in my opinion, there's a big difference between a municipal election and voting at town meeting. I support 16-year-olds voting in municipal elections. I would not support 16-year-olds voting at town meeting.
Any other comments?
I think it's very important that 16-year-olds be allowed to vote at town meeting. There's been an effort over the last few years by the Select Board and the town administrator to increase attendance at town meeting so that young people have a vote, as well as older people who haven't normally attended town meeting. One of the concerns is that the older folks here are making decisions that affect the lives of young people who are here and will be paying the taxes and the consequences of our decisions. So I think that allowing a 16-year-old to come to town meeting and vote is very important. And I think it sets the stage for them to become more active in the community in the
Hey, folks. Ben Ebrich again, 98 River Street. Small story. My twin brother is a middle school teacher in the Cape Elizabeth Schools in Maine. And as I do my rough math, and I was a writing major, so math's tough, about half our tax money goes to schools. Let that sink in for a second. Half our tax money goes to schools. And there's your children right there. My brother in the schools district had, he works in about a 1950s-era building, and it was voted down. Adults failed the kids. And my concern is our town ages, there may not be enough skin in the game with families to have enough votes to support families with kids who are affected by, I'll say it again, half our tax money. So I think it's pretty vital that 16-year-olds do have a vote at town meeting and have a vote at where half our tax money goes. It's their future, and sometimes adults fail.
Hopefully it's on. Emily Sweet, Wilder Hill Road. And I'd just like to say that most 16-year-olds don't listen to their parents. So if they are here for a town meeting, if they're here for a town meeting, they're here because they care and they want to vote. A 16-year-old is not going to come to a town meeting if they don't have strong ideas and they don't want to be part of the process.
Okay. Linda Driscoll, Shelburne Falls Road. Two things. One, if you're on the voter roll, can't you come to town meeting? So I'm just concerned, question about that. And the other thing, as a former educator, I say that there are 16-year-olds who are outstanding about what they know and what they feel. And there are some who aren't, just like adults. There are adults who come and they have strong feelings on certain parts and the others they don't care about. So I think you'd find that across just the general voter population. But I think it's important to get students involved as early as possible, and I absolutely agree. You're going to have the ones who care. And also, when I look at the enrollment in our schools, are we talking about 25 kids maybe over classes where we have 10, 12, 13 kids in each class? So it's not going to be a large population of kids, and then out of those, all of them aren't going to come. So I don't think we're worried that they're going to carry articles that, you know, on this. So I think it's important to involve them as early as possible.
I also wanted to add that 16-year-olds can have jobs, so they would be paying taxes, maybe not in real estate, but in income. And this is going to be very unpopular for me to say, but we are a senior community, and that same argument about the ability of a 16-year-old to vote could be used against seniors as well, where cognitive ability declines.
Luciere again, Conway, Old Cricket Hill. 16-year-olds, they do a lot of surfing on the internet. A lot of the influences come from the internet, and I believe that a lot of the influences come from their parents. There is a time where they do need to start to learn to vote, but they're still children. They're still learning how to be children. Let them grow up. Let them enjoy their childhood before they get thrown into the nasty world of voting. And I picked him because, well, he grabbed me wrong, or his son was caught with cocaine in the White House. How much of that is really true? But how much of the kids believe it?
We have a call on the question. We are going to act on that. Call on the amendment. So we got to deal with that. So the amendment is to add the words "town meeting" to the article. Is everybody clear on that?
There was a second.
Yeah, we got to do the amendment first. So we're going to vote on the amendment right now.
You see the voice, right?
By voice. Okay. Everybody in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
I'd say the ayes have it. So that gets added to Article 33. So are we ready to vote on Article 33 as amended?
Yes.
Thank you for coming back. Voting is open. Five more seconds for the last time. Voting is closed. The amendment pass, or the article passes 68 yes, 35 no, and one abstention.
Mr. Moderator, residents, friends, neighbors, I move to adjourn until Thursday, June 6, 2024, to the Town Hall between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. to bring in their votes for various town officers as set forth in the town warrant.
Do I have a second? If you're here for the first time, so meeting's closed, if you came today for the first time, can you put your hand up so I can see who's new? Don't forget to turn your clickers in.